Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at 253 Broadway on the second floor and also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. We are resuming this afternoon with public hearing, item number 10, and I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Herala to take us through the afternoon items.
Thank you. Public hearing item number 10 is LPC 25-04392, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 607, lot 47, 465 Sixth Avenue, AKA 101 West 11th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1842 and later altered with an additional story. The application is to legalize the installation of storefront infill without LPC permits and to install signage and awnings. And I will note that the applicant's been working with staff on the signage and awning component, and that is currently under review. So it's really just the storefront infill that's being reviewed today.
Well, I'm sorry, did you not hear? Should I repeat? Were you able to? Okay. Could I repeat? Sure. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Commissioners Caroline Passion, Preservation Staff. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and West 11th Street. Here's a historic tax photo showing the conditions, and you'll see by this time around circa 1940 that this corner building, which was historically three stories high, was altered and raised an additional story. And in this tax photo, you'll also note that there were two storefronts facing Sixth Avenue with a southern storefront featuring typical historic storefront configurations with display windows, bulkheads, and a corner entrance with exposed column as well as continuous sign band. And then by the early 1960s here, again, there are still two storefronts facing Sixth Avenue, but you'll note that the southern corner storefront was then altered with metal and glass infill, with the corner entrance relocated to Sixth Avenue. And then at the West 11th Street side here, the creation of two new punched openings. And then by the time we get to the 70s, there was a permit that was issued for the existing storefront infill and signage and lighting for Ray's Pizza, and then a later tenant came in with new signage. And then the current tenant, which is Roma Pizza, then installed, replaced, and altered the storefront infill facing Sixth Avenue with metal and glass infill. There are glass panels with butt jointed, with butt joints, as well as signage and awnings, all installed without permits. And then after the violation was issued, the tenant then removed the signage and then at this time would like to legalize the existing storefront infill as is. And again, as Cory had mentioned, the signage and the cove lighting can all be approved at staff level. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Paula Paulino, who's representing the tenant.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Paulino. I'm from the firm MP Design and Construction, and the client do apologize and acknowledges the fact that he did this renovation and these changes without a permit. And as we see here, the existing elevation as it is now, that we're trying to legalize from the work that was done. I'm going to show you a closer look of what is being done. So on elevation on Sixth Avenue on the facade, we're doing a sideband and also a cornice, taking in consideration the reference of the evolution that this corner has had. And we took reference from this historic photo from Sally Food Shops. So we want to do a cornice and also the sideband as is here and opening the, and like he did, he opened up with the storefront by adding glass. This would be the elevation, the facade on West 11th Street, which is the same situation, of course. We're going to be adding the sign and also preserving what was done with the storefront. This is the plan of the restaurant and the reference of the different elements around This is the elevation at West 11th Street, which we're proposing the signage, a neon sign, and also trying to reference the historic aspect of back then. And this is a section detailing the signage, the color theme, and the elements around the area. As we see here, some example of the things are going to be used for the elevation, an inspiration photo of something that is existing in the area. And as we see here, the rendered image of how it will end up looking with the changes that we've made. So, thank you. If you guys have any questions, let us know.
All right, thank you. Do we have questions on this? So, this was, there is a 1940 tax photo that shows a very large sign band and a sort of corner storefront. And by the time of designation in 1965, although the photo was taken in 1963 for that district, that storefront had already been heavily altered with the creating of smaller openings and putting cladding around the storefront. And so the applicants are asking to modify work that was done without a permit to, which involved enlarging the storefront openings, and they would propose to put laminate bulkhead at the base and a cornice and some other trim details. Cory?
Yeah, and if you could just put it back on a slide with the existing condition photographs. I know I had mentioned when I read this in that the applicant's working with staff on the awning and signage, which is all true. As I said, it's the storefronts themselves, and if you can see on the photo in the middle on the bottom, those openings were enlarged from their prior condition by dropping the sill to sidewalk level. And I think maybe, I'm not sure if that was the case on the long facade as well, but in any case, all of that storefront was replaced. So this is modern storefront infill. I think it has sort of an aluminum, gray aluminum finish. The applicant's asking to legalize those couple of modified conditions and then otherwise the replacement infill itself, and they want to apply a laminate film to the base of it, both for, I think, privacy for people using the restaurant, but also, I think, to evoke, you know, where a bulkhead would have previously been. And really, again, those are the two aspects that, you know, of the storefront itself. So, one other thing is some of the drawings and renderings show a mullion sort of cover on top of joint lines on that large window. My understanding is that it's butt jointed glass right now and that the applicant and owner would be happy to have that legalized as is, but is also willing to explore putting a cap on it if the commission felt that it, you know, improved the proportions. But there actually are two butt jointed pieces of glass on that large window as it exists today. It's a little hard to see. There's three panels of glass on that, on that large width as it exists today.
Right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I have a question, which you may or may not know. I appreciate the applicant's apology. Did the applicant know when they were doing the work that they needed to go to Landmarks? Or was it out of ignorance?
We were the second firm that they hired, so to be honest, I'm not sure what went on there. But it seems that the other architects were not able to solve the problems, and there were some drawings that they had, but then we came along to make it more coherent and fix the problem.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Chloe Gregoire.
My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. It is very disappointing that all of this inappropriate work was conducted without LPC permits. While this location has had nonhistoric storefront infill in place since designation, the current illegal storefront is not at all contextual or appropriate for this building. We hope and expect that the storefront, that this is not a storefront design that the commission would approve, where it's to be proposed before installation following proper procedures, and it must not be approved after the fact. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
My name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds this legalization to be inappropriate. We regret that the opportunity to alter the storefront was not used to restore the historic storefront. We believe that if this proposal had come before the commission, it would not have been approved. We ask the commission to deny this application. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Aleah Lehman.
Aleah Lehman for the Victorian Society, New York. At a minimum, this application represents a lost opportunity. This storefront with the proposed changes could be found anywhere in the city. A properly vetted redesign, including historic proportions and materials, would allow this storefront to finally be brought to a level that is architecturally compatible with the building and the historic district. The current proposal should be denied. The new storefront infill is not appropriate, and applying plastic laminate to the glass to create a faux bulkhead doesn't fix it. We note that there are already existing large lighted signs behind the window glass. Adding the large signs to the sideband, apparently the same illegal signs that were removed, would result in excessive signage. The lighting strip above the sign where a true storefront cornice should be is also not appropriate. Also, it is likely to be extremely bright. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else join us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Being known, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard? Okay, all right, Commissioners, any final questions on this one? Okay, so I think we should move to our hearing discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you second that motion?
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So this, again, the signage and awning components of this application are being reviewed at staff level and will be dealt with pursuant to our rules. So we are looking at the legalization of the enlarged storefront openings with the proposal to modify them by adding the laminate base to create a bulkhead-like feature and at the butt jointed glass, proposing to add a mullion cover if we think that's necessary, and begin our discussion. And just, again, for everybody, when we look at work that was done without permits, we, you know, we don't make a judgment based on being punitive or finding that it's in violation and therefore it's inappropriate. We look at it as if we were looking at it for the first time and whether or not we would approve it in that instance and whether it's consistent with our standards. So that's how we will review this application. Commissioner Master, would you start this one?
Yeah. So, when I look at this, I want to compare it to what was there before, which were smaller openings and a lot more metal. And when I look at what they've done here, I like it a lot better than what was there before because I think making the glass a lot bigger, I think it increases the transparency, and I think it's a better look than what was there previously. I think that adding the cornice is a nice feature, and I think it'll help. I understand that the laminate base is not ideal, and yet I think it serves a functional purpose here, and I think it will recall like a bulkhead, which is better than what we have right now. And in terms of the mullion cover, I think it would be helpful, but I'm going to ask the architects to kind of jump in and see what they think. But because, and because this storefront has been heavily altered in the past, and I think we do give leeway, a lot of leeway to storefront infill, changes in storefront infill, I can find this appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can find this appropriate. The only issue to me is that I don't quite understand the details of it. I don't quite understand bulkhead laminate. I don't know what that means.
It's a piece of flat metal over the glass? Is that right, Cory?
My understanding was that it was an applied film, not a piece of metal.
Got it.
It obscures, maybe allows some light to still come through with translucency, but it's more of a privacy frosted glass.
Got it.
I was going to say, give it to the staff to decide. I think the design is good. The technical issue, they'll leave to the staff.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
So, I agree with my fellow Commissioners, what we're reviewing is acceptable. I would add that, and I realize this isn't what we're reviewing, and it may be basically fitting our rules, it'd be much better if the signage was painted on the wall like the older signage was than raised what looks like plastic, because I think that would just fit in better and be more appropriate, even though I realize that that isn't what we're reviewing.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I share the same sentiment as well. I think that, and one of the testimony about the lighting level, I think they should work with the staff, just in case some of these newer LED lights are excessively bright, so.
Right. Vice Chair Bland?
I have to admit, this is a sight of a guilty pleasure. When it was raised, it was just down the street from my office, and anytime I had to go west on 11th Street to catch the subway at Seventh Avenue, I might stop in and get a slice. I don't know, I'm a little bit on the fence here. I mean, I'm not sure we would have approved this film. On the other hand, it seems maybe we're being punitive if we kind of don't approve it. I echo what Commissioner Ginsburg just said, though I think the most egregious aspect of this might be the signage, and that's not what we're even here to talk about. But staff, I hope, will talk about it. When they do, and so I don't want to be the, I won't be the lone voice against this.
And the sign, I'm not sure if the rendering actually shows the final version. The staff is going to be working with them pursuant to the rules. But just with respect to the panel at the base, and I do think if we were looking at this as a new storefront, might ask for a bulkhead, and then maybe that would be a metal panel and not a film. But on the other hand, I would say that this building has had a history of changes over time, and maybe in that context, something more glassy is okay. So that's, but you are within your, you know, rights to say it should have a metal bulkhead or...
But I like your words, too, so maybe they're my words as well. I mean, I think a more contemporary approach is acceptable. It's very challenging. Maybe this bulkhead film is a cool thing. I don't know. Let's say yes.
That's true. Okay. It is Sixth Avenue. There's a real commercial character and variety. Commissioner Wilder?
Oh, there we go. I think, I think it's appropriate. I do have an issue with the laminate as well. I would wish someone explored other options, whether it was glass or another glass panel or metal or something, but I think it's appropriate overall.
Commissioner Quembe?
I find the arrangement of the storefront to be appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes, far from a beautiful design, I would say, but, and we're looking at the storefront. The thing that stands out is the anodized aluminum, which I would not have picked. But I do agree with Angie in that transparency is something that we care about on these locations, especially a corner. The original condition had a column that was exposed and, you know, so I do appreciate the sense of transparency and the opacity that was there was not that desirable either. So I think I can approve this.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Master will make a motion to approve. They can, I think, we can ask them if they want to explore another treatment for the base, but I think we have enough to support it as is.
In the matter of LPC-25-04392, 465 Sixth Avenue, AKA 101 West 11th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1842 and later altered with an additional story, application is to legalize the installation of storefront infill without a Landmarks Preservation Commission permit and install signage and awnings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I also note that the new awnings, sideband, signage elements are being refined to be reviewed pursuant to the rules and approved by staff. I recommend approval, finding that the work did not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the building and corner storefront has a history of alterations throughout the 20th century, and therefore the work is consistent with the evolution of the building, that the alterations to the storefront, including the removal of metal paneling and bulkheads, and the installation of gray-finished metal and glass display windows and double-leaf doors, resulted in more transparency in keeping with an earlier historic storefront at this building and other storefronts along the busy commercial thoroughfare of Sixth Avenue, that the applied film at the base of the display windows will recall the historic bulkheads and provide a level of privacy within the space, and that the work does not and will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Fair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Quembe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
None in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. Please continue to work with the staff and feel free to continue to explore the material for the base. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 11, LPC 25-00834, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 634, lot 58, 94 Bank Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1838 to 39. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, replace windows, and excavate the rear yard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Scher. I'm from Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. We are the historic preservation consultants on the project. Alex Blakely from AV Architecton, the architect on the project, is also here to answer any 94 Bank Street is located on the south side of Bank Street between Hudson and Greenwich Streets in the Greenwich Village Historic District. It was originally constructed between 1838 and 1839 as a row of three, 92 to its left and 96 to its right. In 1886, the house was raised up one story and given an Italianate cornice. Also likely at this time, it received its sheet metal sills and lintels. Its neighbors in the row were also raised up one story but by different owners and with variations to their design. Our proposed work at the front facade is fairly limited. It includes repair as needed, window replacement, and repainting the front door in off-white color. We would also like to keep the pink color at the front facade. We note that the facade was not painted pink at the time of designation, and there's no LPC permits for this color, so we'd like to legalize the existing color, which has been embraced by the surrounding community. The existing windows are one-over-one and are wood, but are in poor condition and have storm windows in front of them. We're proposing to replace them with new wood one-over-one windows. So here we have the circa 1940 tax photo on the left and an existing condition photo on the right. The tax photo is the earliest photo we were able to find of the house. In the photo, we can see, in the tax photo, we can see that it was painted at that time. It seems to be a lighter color than the adjacent houses. And it's typical for houses that are raised up at a later date to be painted in order to hide the difference between the original brick and the newer brick, both in terms of brick type and also coursing pattern. We can also see in the tax photo that there are one-over-one windows, which we are proposing here. One-over-one windows are common for Italianate houses, and we don't have any documentation of any other window type here. I also note that in the tax photo, 92 Bank has one-over-one windows, and 96 Bank has a mix of two-over-two and one-over-one windows. So this amazing image is taken from Bank Street looking north along Greenwich Street from 1876. This is the Ninth Avenue Elevated Railway, which started in 1868 and then dismantled in 1940. The L took advantage of the wide width of Greenwich Street, and its presence had an impact on the surrounding blocks, both in terms of development and use. We see these maps showing the evolution of this block, starting primarily as a residential small scale and then growing over time with some manufacturing uses such as a large lumberyard, sorry, a large lumberyard, a wholesale bakery, and printing press. At 99 Bank Street, which is just across here, this was, as you may know, a commercial off building that was used as a warehouse and showroom for the General Electric Company. So here we have a photo of the block as seen from the roof of 94 Bank. So we're on the roof. This highlighted in blue is our rear yard. We can see how this development over time has led to sort of a penned-in rear yard condition. And also in plan, we see that there is an irregular rear yard condition for, so this is 94 Bank, 92, 96, the original row. We see that there is an irregular rear yard condition that's created by it terminating into 767 Greenwich Street, which is located here and has a large extension into the rear yard, which you can see here. These are photos taken within the rear yard of 94 Bank. So on the top left, we have the rear yard addition from 767 Greenwich Street that's directly south to 94 Bank, seen here in plan. It says one story, but it's more closer to two stories, one story and a basement, and it's quite large and cuts off the 94 Bank rear yard from the rest of the block. To the west, which we see in the bottom-left photo, this is the rear of 96 Bank, which had a full-height rear addition that was constructed before designation, and it extends out about four foot eight from the original rear facade. And then to the east, there is a tall fence that blocks the Hudson Street properties from the rest of the Bank Street properties. So on all sides, we have a penned-in condition. And then looking at the rear elevation of 94 Bank Street, so this is the 96 Bank Street rear addition that was done prior to designation. Our existing condition includes a two-story structure that shows up by the 1895 Sanborn map, and then you see the brick elevation has been covered in a cementitious coating, and the sills have also been covered in a cementitious coating. Just some other background context to the proposal, we have relevant LPC approvals in the Greenwich Village Historic District, where visibility of rooftop additions was found appropriate. was found appropriate based on certain conditions that allowed for long views over the house's roofline. 105, 107 Bank Street, seen on the left, is just one block to the west of 94 Bank and has that same condition of Greenwich, which is quite wide. And then the angled intersection of Greenwich and Bank creates these wide corners, which allows views over the roofline. So getting to the rooftop and rear yard proposals, here we have existing axon on the left, proposed axon on the right, showing the rooftop addition. Note throughout this presentation, it'll look like the additions are at an angle and projecting out, but it's the house that is angled and the, the new additions are rectilinear, have straight lines. You'll still, you see on the neighbors too, which both have approved staff-level rooftop additions at 92 and 96 Bank, that they also look to be at an angle but are, but are straight lines. Turning around to the back, we see the rooftop addition is set on the inside of the parapet, and then the top floor is preserved of the rowhouse to maintain continuity with 92 Bank to the east. At the basement level, we're proposing to extend out to the lot line to meet this larger addition that we saw in the photos, to bring more light into the rear yard. The rear yard extension at the parlor level and second level comes out about four foot ten, more than the 96 Bank addition that was done prior to designation, but maintains that same distance between the rear elevation and the end of the lot line. Because as you remember from the block pin, there's this angled rear yard condition between the three houses in the row. We constructed a mock-up to look at the visibility of the rooftop addition across the street. So this is 94 Bank, across the street, and along Bank Street here, there's no visibility. We have a, a small area of visibility north on Greenwich Street, and this represents, highlighted here on the bottom-left, the maximum level of visibility. To the west, along Bank Street, we have very little visibility. Wherever we have visibility, we've circled it in yellow, so just a little peek of the mechanical bulkhead here and here. For the maximum level of visibility, we've done a photo montage to show what it looks like, and note that it is very in keeping with other landmarks approvals that have this angled condition. So you can see the, the wide corner that's created with the, the wide width of Greenwich Street and that angled intersection at Bank and Greenwich. So here in elevation, we have existing and proposed, showing the rooftop addition. As mentioned before, the house is at an angle, so true elevation does make it look like it's going on to the neighboring building, but it is not. The penthouse addition is eight foot ten inches in height, and then the existing one-over-one windows will be replaced with new wood one-over-one windows, and that's the only change at the front facade. Here in rear elevation, we see the rear extension, so this goes to the lot line, so it's shown in section, and then the parlor level and second-floor extension, which has a very wide border of brick around the edges. At the top floor, we're preserving the existing masonry openings. The center opening will be dropped for a door, but we'll maintain a horizontal to represent the former meeting rail, so there's continuity between the three masonry openings. Here is the proposed front and rear in rendered elevation. At the front, we're, as I mentioned, we'd like to keep the pink facade. We're repainting the front door in off-white color, and then we have the wood one-over-one windows. The rooftop addition is proposed to be a standing seam zinc, which is in keeping with other landmarks approvals, and then the mechanical enclosure is the minimum height needed and is an aluminum that will match the, the gray zinc below. And then for the top floor of the rear elevation, we're to, we're proposing to keep it in place and remove the stucco so that there's exposed brick again, and then the new addition will have brick to relate to the existing brick at the rear elevation. Here in plan, we see the, the, at top, existing, proposed on the bottom, showing that the setback of the penthouse and the rectilinear line, and then the setback mechanical enclosure at the back of the penthouse. And then we can see that the rear yard addition comes out about 10 feet on one side and about 12 feet on the other side. And then for the extension at the basement level, there will be some excavation required in the rear yard. No excavation proposed in the cellar, as you see existing and proposed cellar plan. So the, the basement would be extended out to the rear lot line to hit that existing addition, which we can see here. So this is an existing section, and then here's the proposed section. So as I said, no, no excavation at the cellar, and then a five-foot-eight excavation in the rear yard to bring this out, and then to, just to bring that rear yard outdoor access a little bit higher so that it's not all the way down here compared to this addition that cuts off 94 Bank from the rest of the block. And then, as I mentioned, one-over-one windows are proposed. We do have updated details of these that show more of an Italianate brick mold, which we haven't been able to look at the existing brick mold because of the storm windows, but there will be either matching existing or an Italianate brick mold for the new one-over-one wood windows. And that's, that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
For the front facade, did you do color analysis to see what was under the pink?
We didn't do color analysis, but we did, there was a 1981 permit from landmarks to paint the brick, the, the brick facade a brick color. It was probably a brick color. Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Other questions? Commissioner Jefferson?
In terms of the context, the pink in relationship to the block, do you have a diagram of that somewhere?
In relationship to the block? Let's see. So these mock-up photos show it. I mean, it's, it's a primarily brick and brownstone block. I mean, some of the brownstone is on the lighter side. I wouldn't say that pink detracts from brick, because it is more of a warmer color that's in sort of a masonry tone. And I will say that all of the neighbors really want the owner to keep the pink. The owner did not paint the house pink, but, you know, inherited a pink house. Yes, it's a, it's a short block, so there's one, two, three, four, five. Yeah. All of them are brick. Yes, well, it's painted brick. Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Chu?
Oh, so it's, I, I'm trying to understand the, the addition on the roof in the rear. Can you explain to me your angles? I just, they're, they're on an angle, and you were talking about it, but I didn't quite understand why you chose this angle.
I think Alex would explain it better, and the house is at an angle. It's because of the, the angle of Bank Street.
Well, and you could see it in plan. Essentially, we're picking up.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Sorry, my name is Alexander Blakely. I'm the architect of record. If you look at the plan.
Is there a plan you could go to?
So we're essentially, you're building the penthouse, so we're showing that wall to be a, a right angle from the lot line rather than the, the street line. And as Sarah mentioned, that's what the other two properties on our west and east also have done and had approved at LPC, or staff level, right? Because it just, it, it's awkward in plan to make it work otherwise, especially with the stair coming up against it.
Okay. So, yeah, you're saying the ne, the neighboring buildings had roof additions, and they were done not parallel to the facade? That's probably the best way to say it, because you can say which, which one is the angle, which one is not. But to me, the facade is the front, and it's either parallel or not, right? The other two, I can't tell what's on them, and when I look at aerial shots, it looks like they're mechanical equipment, but are they roof additions that are occupied near neighbors?
There's one, 92 Bank Street is occupied. It is a, a penthouse addition, and there is one that is now, has been approved, and, and they're now building that according to plan.
Okay. And can you show me the view of the addition from that lower-left corner where you would see the irregular roof addition shape? In other words, the, the visible view from this roof addition is the lower-left corner, but because you're not parallel, that corner now sticks out and, and masses out more. I just want to see your, 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 your simulated perspective view.
Yes, it appears to project further out.
Yes, yes. Okay. That's it, right there. Okay. And the rear is done so because, actually, can you go to the plan again? It's definitely irregular lot, because it kinks in it midway to, or two-thirds, it kinks. Yes, okay. But that one doesn't follow, follow either angle. It's somewhere between.
The, the, this addition in the back goes up straight from what.
Oh, I'm looking at a terrace, terrace at third floor. The third floor, at, the second-floor addition facade is, is at, at an angle somewhere between the rear facade and the lot line?
Yes, it is.
It's in, and it's somewhere between them. Can you just explain the logic?
That was, basically, we took sort of an average here when we were looking at the plan for the kitchen area, which is at that level. Back to it.
I don't think there are upper-floor plans.
So here we can see it. So it, you know, it's approximately midway distance from, because the, the lot lines are of different lengths after the, the building line in respect to the rear lot line, so we, we picked up a point in between there. And actually, we began investigating what was possible from a zoning perspective and took it from the middle of the building when we measured the actual distance or the, the, the rear yard length. And so it's an average from in between.
Okay.
All right. And the two rooftop additions on either side of you, do they sit just behind the rear wall, as yours is proposed to?
No, no, because they were approved at staff level, and staff requires a three-foot setback.
Got it. Okay. And the plan, they look like they were close, but there's three feet. Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Looking at the mechanical enclosure, it's been pushed all the way back, and it might make more sense to have it centered on that bulkhead roof. Would that be a problem? I presume it probably would make it more visible from the front. But from a mechanical equipment, I'm presuming it wouldn't be an issue. And then the second related issue with that is it seems like, at least for part of it, the width of that enclosure could be narrowed, because the clearance on one side of the equipment is much less than on the other.
Yes. So it could be pulled back, so it was a little bit more out of view, as seen from Greenwich, where it is the most visible, because it's the wide street corner. And we thought about pulling it back, but it really didn't seem to make that much of a difference in terms of visibility, especially in the context or consideration that there was a so-called backdrop that one would see from the street of the block behind us. But it could conceivably be reconfigured such that it would be less visible if we pulled it away southeast.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Equembe?
I'm not exactly sure, but I ask the question if the lot is overbuilt. I know it doesn't have a conforming rear yard, but the extension in the back will worsen that condition. So I'm unsure if, even if it goes through here, if it will be okay with the building department.
So if it's overbuilt from an FAR perspective or a lot coverage?
And lot coverage, yes.
Lot coverage, and the required rear yard.
Well, it's, it's within 100 feet of a corner, so there's no requirement from that perspective.
This is the exception.
Commissioner Wilder?
My question is, I'm looking at Sheet 8, where it's showing the highlighted rear addition. Is that the actual height of the finished level in, in relationship to the neighboring building? And in the neighboring building, is that their deck, or is it just, is it just roof that's not accessible? Yeah.
Looking at this Greenwich, what was, which.
Yeah, this wasn't the image, but I think.
In other words, is this a deck?
Yeah. Are we, are you matching the height of that in terms of your terrace, or are you below that?
Oh, we're below this.
Okay.
Show in section. So that, this is the one, this is the existing addition that's at the Greenwich.
Oh, so, so the top of that is, the top of the adjacent building is their.
Yeah. And then this is lower. Do we have a, do we have a.
So your parapet.
So your, so that's the lot, okay, that's the parapet line.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm looking at your roof plan, and your penthouse is eight foot five, right? Eight foot five inches. And then I'm looking at your section, and your section seems so much wider. Your penthouse, could you just move it further to the left?
Not sure I understand yours.
Hi, this is Ocaro Fernandez with the architect. I think you might be looking at the mechanical enclosure depth on the, on the roof plan. Let's take a look again.
So go back to your plan.
All right. The eight foot five is the depth of the mechanical enclosure. The depth of the mechanical enclosure above the penthouse.
Size of the, of the roof itself.
The, the penthouse is about 18 feet deep.
We're confused. Yeah.
Okay, so it's the mechanical.
Mechanical enclosure. Here.
Okay.
So that's eight foot five deep, and then the penthouse, at its furthest point, is about 18 feet.
Help, help me out. So go back to the, to the plan. So the penthouse roof is, it's all, oh, it's over there. It goes all the way back.
Yeah, the penthouse roof is from here to here, to the edge of the rear facade, 18 feet.
You have a fence around the mechanical?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the eight foot five. Yeah.
And Commissioner Wilder?
Is the, is the enclosure necessary? Is it required?
Yes, it is. We have to screen that mechanically.
Okay. Because if it's not visible, it's almost, it's almost like the screen makes it visible.
But it is a zoning requirement to screen it.
Got you. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you, and I'll, there's no one here to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us, I assume, who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Once you are called upon, you'll be promoted to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Chloe Gregoire.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Village Preservation has several concerns about this project. We find the rooftop addition to be too visible, especially from views along Greenwich Street. We ask that the addition be lowered, possibly by sloping it back to both reduce visibility over the primary facade and to evoke more of a studio window design. Effort should also be made to eliminate or reduce the visibility of the mechanical equipment. While we find the removal of the non-hysterical. While we find the removal of the non-hysteric historic rear material to be acceptable, any new rear addition must not intrude further into the already minimal rear yard. As proposed, the footprint of the new addition is too large. We are also concerned about the extent of excavation and negative impact it could have on both this house and its neighbors and request that enhanced engineering review be conducted to ensure the safety of this historic row. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC finds the rooftop to be appropriate, but we find the third floor extension to be inappropriate. HGC's typical stance is to maintain the top two floors in an extension, therefore this extension is one story too tall. We are also concerned that the bulk of the extension eliminates the entire rear yard. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Aleah Lehman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Aleah Lehman for the Victorian Society of New York. The configuration of the tiny rear yards on this end of the block means that excavation will be done adjacent to several buildings under very close quarters. We think this presents a serious risk, a serious risk to these very old buildings despite the assurances we're likely to hear about enhanced engineering reviews. The large two-story rear addition plus the rooftop addition that extends to the rear to the rear wall together obliterate almost all sense of the original house or that this isn't a historic house at all. This is not appropriate. Most of the original rear rear wall needs to be exposed and the rooftop addition needs to be pushed back from the rear wall. It also needs to be more, needs to be made less visible from the street at the front of the building. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Andra. Andra, you may speak.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, my name is Andra Douglas, I own ninety-two Bank Street. And um, my concern um, is the safety of the structures. Um, if there's any underpinning done or digging, um, it's there. I agree with the previous speaker, the the buildings are very old and fragile and that is my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us, I assume, who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. And seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Three recommends mixed approval, recommending denial of rooftop construction unless the height is reduced by moving the mechanical equipment to a non-visible location and denial of the rear extension unless it is in line with the extension of the adjacent house to the west.
Do you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Uh, thank you for everyone's testimony. So in regards to the rooftop addition, uh, we feel that the the height of the rooftop addition is quite modest, it's just eight foot ten inches in height. Um, it is a small roof, so the mechanical enclosure, the most logical place for it was at the the back of the penthouse. We feel the resulting visibility is only for a short, you know, fifteen feet of walking along the north side of Greenwich Street. And is very in keeping with other LPC approvals for rooftop additions in the Greenwich Village Historic District. For the rear yard, the, um, this is an unusual row of three that has this angled rear yard that is created by the angled side elevation of seven sixty-seven Greenwich Street. So there's varying depths of that rear yard. So the logic that we have for the the depth of the rear yard addition is to relate to the depths of the other rear yards in the row. And then obviously, we're significantly penned in on all sides, so the idea of extending out the basement all the way is to just bring us up closer but not matching the height of that um, rear extension of our neighbor right to the south. Um, and then related to the excavation, we are flagged for enhanced engineering review um, and will uh, be working with Landmarks and DOB to ensure that this, the work is done safely and properly. I'll note that it is, it is just um, five foot eight inches of excavation, which is substantially less than what we typically see for rowhouse projects and we are not touching the cellar. Do you want to? Yes. Yeah, let's just look at that again. Yeah, and just uh, from the roof we can see, and yeah, I mean, we have, um, as you can see in the plan, this block is a mix of buildings of ages and heights and size and size. Um, and there's no central donut that our block is part of primarily because of being cut off by seven sixty-seven Greenwich Street.
Relation to, for example, ninety-six and then what's the corner? Greenwich and Bank, our, the pie sort of widens out as you go east and proportionally speaking, we're coming out actually um, less than they are in respect of our rear facade to the rear yard line.
Commissioner Ginsburg, sorry.
Besides losing terrace space, could you move the mechanical equipment to the terrace in front of the penthouse to reduce the visibility? Is there a technical reason why you could?
No, there's not, we could.
Thank you.
We could do that, in fact, the neighbor at ninety-two did something similar to that. You know, we just were we we thought with, you know, all things considered, that that would be the ideal place, obviously from a plan perspective and um, I think it maybe we could pull it a little bit further to the east and make it almost visible.
All right, any other final questions? All right, then, uh, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Uh, Commissioner Quimby, could you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and so we have four components really to this application that we need to discuss. There's the legalization of the pink painted color, which has been there for many years, uh, but it seems it was painted without permits. It does appear in the tax photo that it had been painted as early as nineteen forty. Um, but so it's the the staff could approve repainting, it's just a question of the color really that's before us. Um, and then we have the request to install one over one double hung windows on this building, which again, is a building that sort of is transitional, was altered over time and so by the nineteen forty tax photo, it also had one over one double hung windows as did some of the neighbors. And then the proposal for the rooftop addition and the rear yard addition, which we've had a lot of discussion or conversation about. So we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Chu, would you start this one?
Okay, so at first glance, looking at this project, which has a quite a unique site, it does appear that we're, that a lot of mass is being added to a tight condition. Um, and that's why I I question things like the angles because those those moves have quite a bit of effect to your context. And also because it's not just a rooftop, but a rooftop and a rear addition, the the quantity of addition starts to have impact to um, the presence and scale of the existing house. In general, I I want to hear my fellow Commissioners how they feel about it. I I can't, I keep looking at this and I just feel that the angles are awkward and it may sound simple, but if you look at existing house and you have a rear and a roof that that seem to not work with that, it just feels like it's it's not respecting some of the basic principles of the house. Um, on the rear, I feel like it's a bit odd that it isn't parallel to the facade because it almost feels like it's closing and putting its shoulder to the the neighbor adjacent to it. A parallel approach to me, at least, y-y-you're going back to what the original alignment of the facade was and that I can always see that relationship. But when I see a large mass in front of it, I don't understand what relationship it had to the original. And I feel more so about that in the rear because it's so large and and it seems like it will affect the neighbor. On the rooftop, as I mentioned before, it was really more about the amount of visibility that you get from the public side and it seemed that that corner was was the piece that was being visible. Um, the mechanical enclosure definitely can be seen too. I like Mark's comment about is there room below that you could bring it down? I just feel like I I would want to see a version where it wasn't so extreme, these angles. I I feel that it's awkward. Um, and it may help in this condition the visibility of that corner of the rooftop. I I agree, it's not that tall, but it it is sticking out, it's because of where it sits in the plan. So that's that's how I feel about the overall addition masses. In terms of the rear, I also was looking at the rendering and it felt that if there, is there an existing cornice because it feels like that's missing in the in the new proposed? And if there is, that probably should be kept or replicated.
It it doesn't exist today, but it's a typical request for restoring a top floor, particularly during reconstruction, to add that back if it is missing.
I also noticed that the existing house had window lintels over them, but the proposed new existing facade was missing them. And I would expect that to be retained as well as the window openings and the brick that that the applicants said they were going to keep. In terms of the one over the one windows, I think that we've approved that that proposal in many cases in the past. I I don't see any reason why that's not acceptable here. And lastly, the pink paint, it, I know this building, I've seen it myself many times and it has kind of, it's sort of a character in the block at this point. I mean, it has been there a long time. I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to hear one of my fellow Commissioners how they feel.
All right, Commissioner Master.
The way that it juts out, the rear, so the rear facade, I think the way that it juts out, it leaves more room than the neighbor, if I'm if I'm hearing it correctly. Um, because of the angular feature, I think it's really hard to compare apples to apples. So um, so that's fine, I agree with Commissioner Chu that if they're going to do the 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 top floor, that they should really recreate the details, including the cornice and the lintels, arch lintels and et cetera. In terms of the rooftop addition, you know, I I I'm a little bit mixed on this one because I didn't find that the visibility was very um, was too much. I mean, I feel like we've we've approved um, things that have been this visible um, in the past. So it doesn't bother me too much. Um, the pink color, um, given that they've actually surveyed the neighbors and the neighbors wanted to retain the pink color because it's probably now a characteristic of the neighborhood, I'm actually okay with it. Um, and then the one over one windows, I think are fine.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
So let me start with the pink color on the front facade. I I have no objections to the pink color. The rear facade, though, I have some issues. If you live on the left, on the left-hand side, where they had the existing volume, two-story volume sticking out. When I saw that last night, I thought that was fine, I thought that's what they were doing. But then when I looked at the right-hand side, they extended the basement all the way across and then added two-story to that. And I thought that was a bit excessive. And the way it hits the existing building and the its neighbor, kind of odd. And I can see why they did it, it it makes sense in a way to kind of make that a green roof and have the additional space. But it it's, it's just, it's the existing extension seems so much more appropriate to me. The penthouse on the roof, it should be pushed back some from the, that's that's our basic rule, why it should be pulled back from the edge, at least three feet, and they can do that, they can shift it back. And I don't need, they need the cage around the mechanical system, they could just move the mechanical system back to the center of the form. And I I think with with those corrections, one over one, I can accept. With those corrections, I think I could accept it.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Okay, um, so my initial reaction on the pink color was to paint it a brick color. But if my fellow Commissioners all feel the pink is all right, I can live with the pink. The one over one are fine. I think they should look at either moving the mechanical equipment down to the terrace level in front of the uh, bulkhead addition or study trying to move it so it's less visible. I think the one-story addition for the full site is all right in this case because it's lower than the adjacent and raises it up and the other neighbors could do the same. I think the uh, rear addition should align with the building just above it and not stick out quite as far. And I think, uh, and I agree, they should look as Stephen's comments about the angle make some sense and it would make more sense to angle to align with the facade.
On both the, both the rear and the roof, okay. Commissioner Chen.
I'm in um, in agreement with many of the comments, especially Commissioner Chu and Angie and Commissioner Ginsburg. I think the, given the history of the pink color in the front and that the neighbor, a lot of them wanted to retain it, um, the the fact that it's been there for so long, uh, I could be fine with uh, with keeping the color. Um, I have no problem with the one over one and uh, I think the Commissioner Chu's recommendation is correct, I think the the rear facade, you know, that corbeling corners as well as uh, as well as the arch, uh, that's, you know, like lintel, that should be attractive if if possible. Uh, the setback, I I feel less strong about it, I think, you know, either way it could be bad if they can do a small setback. Uh, or relocate it as Commissioner Ginsburg recommended. So um, did I miss anything else, I think that's it.
Okay, Vice Chair Bland.
Everybody else is still love the pink, I don't love the pink, but I think I'm going to have to get, you're still the pink. Uh, I I don't mind the pink, it's just too pink. Tone it down a bit, the pink, but apparently not. I don't find the visibility to be a problem, actually, over the rooftop and in in the whole milieu of other rooftop additions and so forth, so I don't find that to be a problem. And I don't find the rear um, addition to be a problem either, so I guess I was just stuck on the pink.
Commissioner Wilder.
I think I'm stuck on the pink as well. Uh, I think it's good that you did, uh, that they did speak with the neighbors and community to um, kind of get their opinions on it, so I won't, I won't fight it for that reason since it's kind of redefining the character of. it's kind of redefining the character of of that area. The one over one, I don't have an issue with. I'm still trying to figure out what my issue is with the with all the additions. It's almost like need to subtract one of them, like the first and second floor rear yard addition that extends out. It's almost like if you just did that and a shorter terrace, I would probably love it more versus extending that basement addition all the way out. It's something that's I I appreciate about the existing condition photo that shows the plants at the at that basement level and thinking about how this wall gets extended up and now it's a wall next to the neighbor, which probably eliminates some of that green that's that's also back there that. So I, I don't know, I think it's it's a challenging project. I definitely don't envy the architects for this one because there's so much going on with the site and it's a regular shaped lot and being close to the corner and then the other buildings that have done something, but not necessarily the same thing. So I don't want to say what they should do, I'm just saying, I think all of them together is creating something very weird and and unique and I I can't say I I love it, I'm just trying to understand it more. I don't have, I think the the images from the street do a good job of explaining what's visible from the roof, so I won't argue with what those images are showing. I think the drawings probably hurt more than the pictures do because it looks like those things should be visible, but as we can see from the mock-up that they're not. So for that reason, I won't have an issue with that. I think I'm more just concerned with what's the juxtaposition of all the stuff that's happening in the rear yard.
Commissioner Equenbe.
I pretty much agree with what we've heard already. The pink color, it's fine. The one over one, I have no objection. I guess where I'm struggling is the resolution of all the additions and how they work together. I don't know, it may need to be massaged a little more. And I guess that's that's where I'll leave it.
Okay, all right. So I think what we're going to do, we had a very good discussion, thank you all for your comments, we'll take no action today. I think that the commission as a whole, we are fine with the pink color as it's been there a long time and it's become part of the streetscape and the one over one windows are, you know, are found in typical transitional buildings of this age and type. But I think that the the where everybody's comments are really getting at are the sort of cumulative effect of both the rooftop addition and the rear yard additions and how those angles work together. And it's interesting, this is an angled block and sort of blends itself to having something a little quirky and angled maybe. But I think that because even the additions themselves don't sort of share any lines and angles, it's resulting in something that feels a little awkward and it may be making it feel like it's more out of scale. And if it were lines that were parallel to the facade or more rationalized, it the scale might not read as overwhelming. So I think it's those angles really that you need to re-study and rationalize and think about, as you think about how to rationalize them, also think about the effect of the scale on the building, the cumulative effect. And we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. And I think that there's support for each component, it just needs a little bit more work. Okay, thanks, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 12, LPC 25-11234, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 697, lot 13, 521 West 25th Street in the West Chelsea Historic District. This is a factory-style building designed by Schickel and Ditmars and built in 1901. The application is to modify masonry openings and install storefront infill and signage.
Good afternoon, Misha Hunter, Lee Saltzman Architects, we're the preservation consultant to the Prime Group, the ownership. Anthony from Prime Group is going to introduce himself in the project first and then I'll walk through the the project slides, so just give a moment.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Anthony Kordagley, the Vice President of Planning and Development at Prime Group Holdings. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here on behalf of Prime Group Holdings, the owner and operator of Prime Storage. We are headquartered in Saratoga Springs, New York, and since 2013, we've grown to over 700 employees nationwide across 28 states with over 28 million square feet of self-storage. Prime is proud to be part of the fabric of many communities across the U.S., including right here in New York City, with locations in Harlem, Queens, Bronx, and Red Hook. Today, we are truly honored to present our vision for 521 West 25th Street, located in the heart of the West Chelsea District. The project reflects our deep commitment to adaptive reuse, contextual design, and a community-centered approach that respects the architectural legacy of the neighborhood. We are committed to a to a solution that honors the district's architectural heritage while offering a needs-based and lasting source. Before I turn over to Misha Hunter, our Landmarks Preservation Consultant, to dive into the deep, to deep dive into the details, I'd like to offer our thanks on behalf of our CEO, Bob Moser, and the entire Prime team. Thank you for the opportunity engaged to engage with Landmarks on this project.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to walk you through the presentation, the Prime Storage slides of other locations elsewhere in New York City. Quickly, just to summarize, the project essentially includes two baskets in terms of the scope of work. So there are a few scope items that are going to be presented to you today that are anticipated for a commission-level review, but the large lion's share of the scope of work is anticipated to be reviewed by LPC at the staff level. So we will not be focusing on that today, but I just want to give you a general outline of all of that scope. So before you today will be some bifold metal and glass doors at the first floor, and then also some multi-light metal and glass display windows with black finish, both with flat-headed lintels and segmentally arched lintel. And then one location for signage. But at staff level, we would like to restore several ornamental bracket light fixtures and install new teardrop luminaires, do graffiti removal, remove non-functional metal appurtenances and external conduits, install security cameras and intercom with concealed conduit, and install rooftop HVAC equipment on existing dunage that would not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and also remove nonhistoric metal and glass light fixtures at the cornice line that, you know, would also have restoration of the coping units once they're removed. So just wanting to give that sort of big picture, if you will. So in terms of the location, the building is indicated in the blue hatch, both in the Historic District map and the Zola map on the right. So the address, 521-37 West 25th Street in the West Chelsea Historic District. I was able to find a few historic maps dating as early as 1911. The building is 1901 Schickel and Ditmars. And we see the earliest maps indicating it being the Conlee Foil Company. It was a manufacturer of tinfoil. If anyone's familiar with cigars or cigarettes, they're wrapped in a very fine tinfoil. So just imagine that this was the manufacturing facility for that type of tinfoil. And over time, you're going to see by the 1955 map where the High Line is located, so not immediately to the east of the site, but one 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 building over. And then this is the 2018 to 1910 Zandware map. By this time, of course, there's no Conlee Foil, but it's an art gallery use, which again is very consistent with what you find in the West Chelsea District. Was able to find a historic 1930s photo at the New York Public Library, and at this point in time, the building had been sold from Conlee Foil to the Reynolds Metals Company, R.J. Reynolds. By the 1930s, late 1930s, we start to see some changes. So just going back here, the circa 1930s, earlier photo, you can see at the first floor that it was primarily a pedestrian access point. There was not a lot of loading bays or anything like that. But by the 1930s, you're starting to see more truck traffic and and certainly some changes to the infill at the first floor. By 2008, you can see the designation photo. The first floor certainly had been modified a number of times, again, to accommodate art gallery use. We know that from 1947, when the building changed hands, that there were also really increased need for truck traffic and a new, eight new loading berths were added to the first floor. So this building has certainly responded to changes of use and changes of program over time. So there's that narrative history of change. The other thing that we note is that while the building was designated in 2008, by 2014, the commission had previously approved a certificate of appropriateness for new infill at the first floor, so particularly for display windows and doors. This is a rectified image showing the existing condition of the building. So again, you can see this largely a brick facade, some very ornamental brick, particularly at the center tower, which projects forward slightly, as well as at the end bays on the west and the east side and at the roof line. Some more detailed views, particularly showing the existing condition of the nonhistoric metal and glass infill that exists at the first floor. And one of the views of the ornamental light bracket that there are two instances of between the first and second floor at the spandrel level. And just to give a sense of context, the commission, of course, has looked multiple times at other sites within the West Chelsea District, including the Terminal Warehouse, the Chelsea Factory, and the Starett Lehigh Building. We also wanted to bring to the commission's attention the fact that a metal and glass bifold doors had been previously proposed and approved by the commission, proposed for the brewery, Omar Brewery in Brooklyn. So just to show that this is something that is was certainly looked at for this application. These show some views of those types of metal and glass bifold door installations. And then just to summarize the proposed scope of work, again, the existing condition is at the top of the slide and the proposed condition is at the bottom of the slide. So we're going to see some removal of nonhistoric metal and glass infill. We're going to see some new display windows with brick bases and cast stone sills. The metal and glass infill throughout the first floor will be painted black to match the finish of the windows at the upper levels. There will be one instance of non-illuminated signage. And also at the eastmost bay or second to eastmost bay, where there is a segmental arch, you'll see that presently there is a flat-headed lintel and the segmental arch had been infilled with brick. And in response to comments from the community board, the segmental arch will be restored. In fact, the the width of the masonry opening will be narrowed in order to correspond with the segmental arch above, and then the new metal and glass infill will be installed there. The bifold doors, you can see in two locations, to the east of the central tower and then that one instance of signage at the transom level, non-illuminated. The other thing to mention too here is that while there are two loading bays that are proposed, no curb cuts are proposed in this application. The existing nonhistoric concrete sidewalk does slope to the roadbed. These are some other views, existing on the left, proposed on the right. And you can see also that there will be some plantings in the existing movable planters at the sidewalk level. And just some more annotations to existing and selective removals as well as proposed conditions. The building is over 200 feet, linear feet in terms of street frontage, so we wanted to capture both the east side and the west side views. And then I'm going to turn the floor over to Daniel from BWD Architects who's joining us from an online remote position. So I think he's been able to join the Zoom. Daniel, if you'd like to speak.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Great, Daniel Herrera with BWD Architects, the Senior Project Manager. We are the architect of record on this project. First of all, thank you, Misha, for that introduction and the historical context for the project, and thank you Commissioners for your time today. Just firstly, there's been a great effort and a lot of care taken to introduce only the lightest of touches necessary to accommodate this program. What we're looking at now is our selective removals elevation. This indicates locations of items to be removed, such as existing nonhistoric metal stairs, landings, handrails, existing recessed storefront door window assemblies, and then a pair of exterior knee wall locations at the proposed interior loading bays. So in an effort to restore a portion of the original facade, as Misha mentioned, there's a segmental brick arch on the east side of the building that we are proposing to reactivate by removing the brick infill underneath the existing lintel and then to rebuild the original jams in that opening, which will narrow it slightly, but with the removal of the infill brick and the lint, the existing flat-top lintel will restore how it was originally constructed. May I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So accompanying the elevation, this is our selective removals plan. This identifies precise locations of those items to be removed on the facade. You can see there's four locations along the bottom of the plan. This is the street side where the existing entry points, we have the existing stairs, landings, and recessed storefront assemblies are planned to be removed. Additionally, there's the locations of the existing openings, which are being prepared for the new overhead bifold doors as well. May I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So this is our proposed new work elevation. So the most significant updates, both to the interior and the exterior, are the build-out of a centrally located retail office. It's identified by a brand signage shown at the main entryway. This is just to the right of column line 10. And this adjoins the the interior loading spaces. So these are enclosed parking spaces inside the building for customer vehicles. They're accessed through a pair of overhead bi-folding metal and glass doors, and they utilize existing masonry openings in the facade. The interior of the layout, that we're looking at the the first floor plan now, so we can see how the the central office location and the interior loading, they're using the existing openings in the facade. These are at the bottom of the plan between lines nine and 13. So the existing doors and windows, which are all tagged as EX prefixes, those are all existing to remain, while the new assemblies that we're proposing for the storefront While the new assemblies that we're proposing for the storefront infill in the facade, those are all, carry either a number or letter designation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So very quickly, this is a slide with a couple of sections and details of the proposed storefront infill. These are all within existing masonry openings, so there's no enlargements proposed there. Next slide, please. So here we have the, the proposed detail for the segmental arch window. The design intent is to match the original construction of the window. So within the same plane relative to the face of wall, we'll have the, the new storefront assembly installed. The, the brick infill at the knee wall and the jam reconstructions propose to match as closely as possible to the existing masonry brick in color variation, bond pattern, texture, mortar color, and mortar tooling. The window frames, the glazing is all proposed to match as closely as possible to the finishes of the upper floor windows, which are black with clear glazing. And the sills are finished with a cast stone element to match the existing adjacent window openings on the first floor level. Next slide. Thank you. So these are just sample, sample images of details from the door manufacturer. And these just illustrate their operation. Next slide, please. So these are the site-specific details for those overhead bifolding doors. The details at the bottom, they show both the open and closed positions of the doors, as well as the, the plan detail above them, showing how the, the door jam and the mechanism is all installed towards the inside face of the exterior wall. The selection of these bifold doors, they were very specific, which allow the panels of the doors to match the same glazing pattern of the existing storefront. And as with the, the infill storefront assemblies, these doors are proposed to be finished with black frames, clear glazing, to match the upper story windows. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is the slide to illustrate the proposed brand signage and as well as the mounting connections for the signage. The landing location is directly above the main office entry. This utilizes a space within an existing spandrel glass transom. The lettering is proposed to be steel plate that is painted to match the brand's dark blue logo. And the sign is attached via steel channels and plate. And these align with the existing vertical mullions of the, the transom. And that concludes that portion.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
What happened to the gallery? And a further question, although we don't control use, and so I can't talk about use, but this could have been great housing. Why are we storing stuff in it?
Nobody answered. Maybe that's a rhetorical point. How would it be rhetorical, actually? I'm mute, I think.
Mr. Herrera, did you want to say anything? I think he's okay.
Actually, maybe Misha. Actually, don't you have an answer to that?
No, no comment.
That's a comment.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
I think they were all arched. There was an early, there was a historic photograph early on. But Misha, I believe in some, it, the base started to be modified as various uses took over the building. So it's been modified for some time.
Yeah, you can see from this circa 1930s. Look at the first floor. I mean, it's mostly windows and then just a few doors. It's a very pedestrian experience. And then by the 1930s, you're seeing much more movement and, and traffic and more, more trucks, more vehicles. I'm sorry. It became, by, by 1947, there were eight new loading berths that were added. So it, apparently, I guess, post-World War II, as there was a lot of movements of personnel and material and things were really building and moving after the war, a lot of need for truck traffic. And so this building responded to that, to that change. And then, as you can see, of course, by 2008, a lot of those loading berths had been changed into display windows for art gallery use.
Right. And, and the other question I have in detail is, you show a lot of renderings of that, and I can't tell, but is there an existing steel corner guard at every dock berth there that's embedded in the brick? Or is it attached to the face of the brick? Your detail ignores that, so I'm not sure what, what happens there.
Yeah, a, a number of them are concealed behind these metal stairs with railings. And so the few that we can see exposed, those would remain, existing to remain. We just don't know what exists underneath those stairs right now. And if, if they do exist, we, I would propose that we would keep them to be consistent, as the design has been very much inspired by what are the conditions on the, on the other bays at the first floor. So if that helps you.
So the intent is to keep them and repaint them black?
I, I haven't finalized the conversation, but I would believe so.
And then your new storefront is, was explained is in the back of the masonry walls. There's a depth to that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jefferson.
So I'm trying to understand the concept of this facade restoration. The building is almost symmetrical. The base level is asymmetrical, right? Different on one side to the other. So you cannot resolve that functionally. So what, what you're doing is to say, I'm going to restore the brick, right? With the concept and put other openings, make a rounded top or rounded lintels. But the, the, the concept is to restore the brick and what else? What, what are you doing at the base level in terms of the symmetry of the whole building? What is it that you're doing?
Well, I think they're mostly working with existing openings. They are restoring one opening to its original width and arched top, but other than that, working with existing openings.
One side is A, one side is B. And then you're restoring the openings inside A. And that's the concept of what they're doing. Okay.
Okay. Other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. And I will note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HTC supports the majority of this proposal, but we believe that the use of flat arches on the ground floor would be a more appropriate choice and would aid in the restoration of this building. We encourage the applicant to take the opportunity to restore these arches. Thank you.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function. Should you wish to speak? And I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Four recommends mixed approval, provided that brickwork be examined and replaced as needed to ensure a unified facade, that the segmented, segmental arch top between columns 14 and 15 be restored, that the non-functioning lights at the stone copings above the roof parapet be removed, that the applicant investigate the use of rooftop solar panels to power the building's lighting, and that a minimum of 10 street trees be planted along the full 200-foot frontage.
It sounds like there are some issues that are outside of our purview that came up at the community board, but you're welcome to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
Yes, all I'll say is that that letter, the resolution from the community board, was issued but did not incorporate the response from the ownership, particularly the removal of all of the lights. So you can see there are five lights at the roof line, right? That would be removed in response to their request. This bay, where there was previously a flat-headed lintel and then brick infill at the segmental arched opening, that is being revised. The masonry opening is being restored to that segmental arch, a new infill. There was discussion about street trees, but really the sidewalk is just too narrow for that. And so the owner is committed to replanting in the existing movable planters and performing selective brick repairs at the first floor. Again, in, in conversation with the community board. Thank you.
Any final questions, commissioners? Okay, all right. I think we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Commissioner Nkwebe, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on changes to accommodate this use, new use at this building. And as Misha presented, this building has had a number of uses over the years that have resulted in changes to the ground floor. And, and the applicant is proposing to work with the existing openings, with the exception of one, which they will restore to its original width and arched top. But otherwise, they're working with the existing openings that were there at the time of designation. So we really can't compel them to change those arches unless they were proposing to modify the openings themselves. So we'll be looking at the various types of windows and bifold doors that are being installed within the openings and the signage above the one bay. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
Okay, so I, I have to say, although not in our purview, the use is somewhat surprising. But given that, I think what they're proposing here is reasonable. The ground floor has been modified so many times based on function and use, and modifying it again. But in general, keeping the existing openings makes sense. And the bifold doors at the loading docks should be attractive. And so I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, likewise, yeah. I, I think I'm glad that they heated the community board's, or some of those patches.
All right, Vice Chair Bland.
Yeah, again, I'll just express my profound disappointment with the use, but my admiration, actually, for the preservation of the building itself. So you've done a very commendable job. I have no comment on that part of it.
Commissioner Wilder.
Think it's appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Nkwebe.
I find it appropriate as well.
Commissioner Chu.
Agreed, and I just want to make sure that with staff, it's looked at. We didn't talk about the upper windows, but I'm assuming that there's no storage things up against the windows and there's a dimension of clear, hopefully a corridor right there so we get some transparency of the facade.
We would be looking at that in the interior plan.
Otherwise, I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that I think they've done a very good job. I think that the after is, is much more attractive than before, and they've done a good job with restoration. I also want to note that I think that the signage is modest and appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
So close to doing, really solving the complete problem, but it's appropriate.
All right, so I think we have an agreement. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make the motion?
With regards to LPC 25-11234521, West 25th Street, West Chelsea Historic District. A factory-style building designed by Schickel and Dittmars and built in 191901, application is to modify masonry opens, openings and install storefront infill and signage. I note that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West Chelsea District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the masonry openings at the ground floor have been altered over time, and that the proposed modifications will only remove a limited amount of plain brickwork and modern stairs, that the installation of brick bulkheads and cast stone sills at the select openings will create a uniform treatment at the west side of the building base, and the reintroduction of the arch-headed lintel and brick bulkhead, and brick bulkheaded select openings in the east side will restore the openings closer to the historic appearance, that the proposed ground floor or infill featuring black finish metal multi-light windows and operable garage doors will be in keeping with the variety of infill historically found at industrial buildings at, of the style and age, and will facilitate the adaptive reuse of this historic factory building, that the proposed signage mounted at the modern transom framing will be modest in size and will feature black finish mounting brackets to match the adjacent infill, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the West Chelsea Historic District.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Nkwebe, sorry. Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Master.
Aye.
Wilder.
Aye.
None in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, and we will move to the next and final item.
Last item is public hearing item number 13. LPC 25-11656, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1380, lot 69, 2 to 6 East 66th Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-Italian Renaissance-style apartment building designed by J.E.R. Carpenter and built in 1919 to 20. And the application is to modify window openings and install balconies.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Julie Rosen from Higgins Quasbarth and Partners Preservation Consultants. I'm joined today by my colleague Esther Wagner, as well as Jeffrey Flanagan, the project architect. 4E 66th Street is an 11-story neo-Italian Renaissance-style apartment building. It was constructed in 1919 and designed by J.E.R. Carpenter and Cross &amp; Cross. As you can see from the map, the building is located at the southeast corner of E 66th Street and Fifth Avenue, located in the Upper East Side Historic District. And the building, as you can see, is L-shaped. The primary facades on Fifth Avenue and 66th Street. And then it also contains a number of setback secondary and recessed facades rising above the adjacent Temple Emmanuel. And you can see this here in the plot plan, as well as in the aerial view. So our proposal before you today is to modify four window openings at the 11th floor at two secondary elevations. And we have the areas of work highlighted in red here, as well as on the overall photo at the left. All of these areas have very limited visibility from Fifth Avenue, as well as in a bit to Central Park. So there are three windows on the south elevation that we're proposing to modify. Only two of them are visible. Those openings will be enlarged to receive new French doors and balconies. And then one window opening on the west secondary elevation will be enlarged to accommodate paired multi-light windows, excuse me, a paired multi-light window. The proposed designs for doors, balconies, and the paired window are all in keeping with work that the commission has previously approved at the eighth and ninth floors. As you can see from these photos, both the south and west secondary elevations are set back considerably from Fifth Avenue, and they're only visible over the adjacent chapel. The view on the left is taken from the Transverse Road in Central Park to provide context. This, of course, is not a primary pedestrian path. So do just want to note that the other views are only from Fifth Avenue, and again, in very limited areas. Historically, the building did have multi-light windows throughout with a regularized pattern on the primary facades that contrasted with the irregular pattern and variety that you can see on the secondary elevations. I do want to also point out the ganged windows that were present at that south courtyard as well. I do want to also point out the ganged windows that were present at that south courtyard as well. We have some enlarged views here of the scopes of work, the south courtyard elevation on the left, the west secondary elevation on the right. Here, we can more clearly see the commission-approved French doors and balconies that were approved at the eighth and ninth floors. And then on the west elevations, we can see the variety of window opening sizes and infill types here, including this paired multi-light window that was recently approved by the commission at the eighth floor. We have an existing plan here showing the locations of work, again, set back from Fifth Avenue, as well as the proposed and plan. And then we have an existing elevation on the left and proposed on the right. The existing windows at the eleventh floor are nonhistoric, so those will be removed and the sills will be dropped to enlarge the opening height. The width will remain the same. As you can see on the right here, new French doors will be installed. They're going to be bronze. They'll have an architectural bronze finish, so they'll read very dark, almost black. And that will actually match the finish of the French doors that were approved at the eighth floor. Projecting limestone balconies will also be installed. New iron work will be installed on top of those limestone balconies. The decorative design, including the cast iron material and the black painted finish, is in keeping with the balcony railing designs that were approved, again, at the floors below. We see existing plan on top, proposed on bottom. I think, just want to point out a few things here. The width of the existing openings will remain, again, as only the height that's being enlarged. And then the width and the extension of the balconies will also match the floors below, again, to create consistency on this elevation. We have details here of the proposed French doors and balconies. The existing masonry opening will be enlarged by two feet in height, and that is in order to drop the opening and the sill to the finished floor level at the interior. And then the railings will be forty-two inches in height to meet code requirements. Couple of enlarged sections here existing on the left, proposed on the right. Here, the limestone balcony details will also match the floors below. The new bronze doors will be inset from the facade to give a little bit of relief. And then there will also be new wood brick molds installed to match the historic building standard. Moving now to the west elevation, the existing window here is also nonhistoric. That will be removed. And a larger area of plain brick masonry will also be removed to allow for a larger window opening at this floor. This will accommodate, as you can see, a fixed paired simulated double-hung wood window with an eight-over-eight configuration that matches the approval at the eighth floor. The width of the new opening will align with both the eighth floor and the tenth floor, again, to provide consistency on the secondary elevation. And then the configuration and the black painted finish will also match the prior approval. I do just want to note that there is a slight height increase at this top floor. This is in order to allow the window to be larger, to allow more light into the interior. This window, as you can see from this view from Fifth Avenue, is set back quite a distance from the street. It's also a very oblique window, excuse me, oblique view and very high on the building. So we do not feel that this height differential will be perceptible from the street. Again, existing proposed plans, just an enlarged view showing the area of plain brick that will be removed to accommodate the larger window. And then a few details here as well. We have overall elevations shown on the proposed window. The width, again, will align with the floors below. It will be eight feet in width. The height of the window will be eight foot three. This is a fixed window, but the simulated double-hung configuration will actually read like a true double-hung window with the meeting rail and that setback lower sash. Similarly to the French doors, there will also be new wood brick molds installed around the perimeter to match the building standard. And then just to finish up, again, we're only looking at modifications to eleventh floor windows. All of the scope has been designed to be consistent with the prior commission approvals at the eighth and ninth floors. And it is also following a pattern that has now been established on these elevations. We are only removing nonhistoric windows and plain brick masonry, so we're not impacting any significant architectural fabric. And the new installations will be seen within the context of these other altered window openings. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have two. The first one is the decorative metalwork looks similar but not identical to the ones below. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, so there is an aesthetic preference on the client's part to do something just a little bit different at the eleventh floor, at the top floor. But the material, cast iron, the black painted finish, will match the other railings, and it is stylistically similar to the other floors.
The other question is the detail with the limestone piece coming out for the balcony does not seem to have a thermal break, which as I understand it is required by code. Is that something that will be added, or I'm just asking about?
That's a great question. That's a question that I'll have Jeffrey Flanagan, the architect, respond to.
Thank you.
So yes, definitely. We would definitely review all of the code details. The waterproofing as well is all part of the process. We'll implement.
It will modify your detail, but I presume it won't be visible, so it doesn't really matter for us. Thank you.
And the balcony is also raised up. It's one step up higher, so we're not touching anything below the floor line.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? And we'll move to testimony and we'll come back to you. I note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Zainab Taran.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Taran, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. The Upper East Side Historic District Designation Report recognizes J. Edwin R. Carpenter as one of the most noted architects of the many apartment buildings erected in New York City during the nineteen twenties, noting his lasting influence on the architectural character of our district, particularly along Fifth and Park Avenues. Two dash six E Sixty-Sixth Street stands as a prime example of Carpenter's work, refined, meticulously crafted, and rich with understated elegance. Unfortunately, the building's visual integrity has been compromised over time. Its facades, both primary and secondary, now exhibit a disjointed mix of window styles undermining the original architectural vision. When Friends testified on a similar proposal for the eighth floor in twenty twenty-one, which saw to alter window openings and add balconies, we stressed the urgent need for a window master plan to guide future alterations in a unified, historically appropriate manner. Four years later, that recommendation remains just as relevant. While Friends can support the proposed window expansion on the west facade, which features a pair of eight-over-eight windows matching historic window details, our preservation committee has serious reservations about the proposed balconies on the south-facing facade. Despite prior approvals in two thousand nine and two thousand twenty-one on other floors, we believe the ornate and visually heavy design clashes with Carpenter's more restrained and dignified aesthetic. Given its high visibility, the secondary facade deserves the same design sensitivity and review rigor as the primary elevation. We urge the applicant to work closely with the commission to develop a design that better honors the architectural legacy of Carpenter's work. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Being none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Yes, please, thank you. And this is the perfect slide to speak to here. I actually just wanted to go back to Commissioner Ginsburg's question as well about the railing design. I think this slide is helpful to see, you know, the vantage point that you're actually viewing these balconies from. We have the Zoom views to provide a little bit more detail and discussion, but you really are seeing these installations from quite a distance and up high on the building. And so that little deviation in design, we do not feel will be perceptible from the street. In response to the Friends' testimony, I'll kind of go one by one. And just wanted to emphasize that we are only modifying the secondary facades here. These elevations always had a different fenestration pattern from the primary facades, so continuing to distinguish these windows from the primary facades, we do feel is appropriate. We're also modifying window openings in the context of other commission approvals, which have occurred over the last several years and following, again, this pattern on both the secondary south courtyard elevation, as well as the west elevation. Regarding the comment about establishing a master plan, the team is in discussions with the building ownership about moving forward with this. They're currently considering how they would like to proceed. But, you know, our understanding is that stuff has been approving restorative window scope at primary facades and secondary facades here as well, and that that is going very well. So for these balcony installations and French doors, we are, we're here before you today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So this is a proposal to modify window openings and install cast iron and limestone balconies at the secondary facades, which will align with and be similar to other openings that the commission has approved and other balconies that the commission has approved on these facades that are seen from long and oblique views. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
I thought the railings were very handsome. The part that they do the other three, but I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
And I find it appropriate. It would be great if there was a master plan for the windows. I will defer to my fellow commissioners, but I think it would be good if the railings matched the other railings, because if these are different, and then the floor below puts in ones that are slightly different. But I realize it's a secondary facade and only a little bit visible, so it isn't a deal breaker.
Okay. Commissioner Chen? Okay. Commissioner Vice, sorry, Vice Chair Bland?
Yes, I can accept it as given.
Commissioner Wilder?
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Nkwebe?
I also believe it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
It's appropriate, but I have one comment, and I just want to make sure the applicant is aware of this as they move forward. But looking at the drawings and the notes, this is a brick facade. And there's lots of dimensions that do say VIF, but it really, the point is to make sure you're hitting a full brick module, because there's some dimensions that are not on a brick module. We don't want to see slices of brick cut for new opening dimensions. So where it does align, that is true. It should align with the windows below, but you're doing new heights. And I just want to make sure that somewhere in your final docs that you write where VIF or the next brick module is, that's really what drives it.
Okay. Yeah, and the staff will review the final drawing.
And I assume those are steel lintels at the top, because there's flat and there's no lintel shown in any of the drawings.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think that the balconies are appropriate and attractive. And I also wanted to note the other window opening, I think that they want to expand, is also appropriate.
Okay. All right. So I think we can make a motion to approve this. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make that motion?
In matter of LPC dash twenty-five, Application for modifying. Excuse me, I screwed up. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed French doors and balconies at the courtyard facade will closely match those previously approved by the commission at lower floors, that the new windows openings, that a visible secondary facade will be seen in context of the variety of other window openings, that the installation of a single and paired multi-light windows will be in keeping with the consideration type, size, and position of other windows and openings found on these secondary facades. Work will not detract from the special architectural and historical character of the building or the Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Nkwebe?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And that concludes our public hearing for today, July eighth. And we will see everyone on July fifteenth, next Tuesday. Thank you.